Give us the stain, our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not to temptation, but deliver us from evil. That is the kingdom, power, and glory of our neighbor. Amen. What allegiance do you fly from the United States of America? And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all?
Okay, item D on the agenda is swearing in patrolman Chase Labor. Chase, do you want to come up here?
All the way, all the way around.
All the way, all the way around. You put that on your uniform longer a little bit? You're all right, well, what's no land, okay?
All right. Don't poke yourself.
Don't poke him. Before we do this, Chase, we got to make sure you know what you're signing up for. Signing up for is, in the game of tag, you're always it. You're always chasing the other people, right? You're never getting chased. People always chasing you. Everything you have on, everything you touch to your patrol car, we can replace, all right? We can't replace you, all right? The old police chief used to say criminals are stupid, that's why they're in crime. We'll catch them eventually. We don't need John Wayne, we need you. Look at the people out here that are happy that you're here. They're proud of you, right? See how I'm waving? Look at that. They want to do the same thing when you get ready to retire, all right? So make sure you retire the right way. I only have four council meetings to go, then my time in the mayor is being done. But everybody else sitting around here doesn't want to go to last call because you did something stupid, all right? You join a good organization, good officers, they know what they're doing. The good land gave you two eyes and two ears and one mouth for a reason. Listen and watch what they do, he can be just...
Yes, sir.
One last thing, before we sign you in, if you go do something stupid right now, you're going to be in Jen's paper on the back page in the blog. Once you sign this piece of paper, you do something stupid, you're on the front page above the crease, all right? You ready to go?
Yes, sir.
All right, let's do it. I'm swearing right back here, right, 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 hey. You know? Raise your right hand and greet after me. I state your name.
I, Chase Labor.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Ohio.
And the state of Ohio.
And the charter ordinances and resolutions.
And the charter ordinances and resolutions.
Of the city of Napoleon, Ohio.
Of the city of Napoleon, Ohio.
And the laws of the state of Ohio.
And the laws of the state of Ohio.
And faithfully discharge and perform.
And faithfully discharge and perform.
All duties incumbent upon me.
All duties incumbent upon me.
As patrolman of the city of Napoleon, Ohio.
As a patrolman in the city of Napoleon, Ohio.
According to my ability and understanding.
According to the best of my ability and my understanding.
Sign right there for me, please. Okay, one more here on this one. That's you. Okay, now, who's out here taking pictures?
Everybody.
Everybody? Anybody special we have coming here and give a little close?
You guys want to get up close?
Does anyone want to come and close? Come right in here if you guys want to. Come on in, yeah. Yep. He's going to make it.
You don't need to walk and stick, old man?
I'll manage this.
Okay, this is worth it, yeah. How about that, Dave? How about that?
Make his pride.
All right, now we're going to pin you on. All right, little lady, it's your, it's your time. I think it's got a tooth right here in your uniform. All right, that little hole right there.
Can you get a crouch? There you go.
On purpose.
You're an hound.
I didn't either.
Not yet.
You think he's really tough, but she's really good, I bet she's really good.
Bulletproof or what?
Unprepared.
Give me some help here. Nice job, kid.
It's all right.
Wild.
Patrolman, you want to say anything?
Uh, I was wondering about the speech. Uh, this is just something I've always wanted to do with my life. About a year, a little over a year ago, I made a promise, and I intend to keep that promise. That's why I'm here today, so.
Awesome.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Uh, I don't think she's... Maybe Aunt Tori. Tori, you want up here?
You want to take a picture?
No one told me I had to be in a photo.
Oh, just come on up.
Come on, Aunt Tori. You've been specially, specially required.
You've been voluntold.
There we go. Who wants to take a picture? Somebody take a picture. Mr. Bane, huh? There we go. All right, there we go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Congratulations, Chase.
Is that everybody? I didn't miss any of it. Think you did? Moving on to item E, is presentation of a service award for auxiliary police officer Pete Mendez. Pete, come on up. No? Did you go to, where you at in school? Paris Island or?
Oh, San Diego.
San Diego? Okay.
Oh, you're kind of thinking. I saw the other ones, I remember.
That's your main building, sir?
All right.
Okay, that's her. I understand this. About two hundred and ninety, and I go, oh, that's your one. How could I forget? Yeah. Yeah. Sergeant, whatever her name is, right? Yeah. Gunny or sergeant?
He was a staff sergeant.
Staff sergeant, okay. For those who don't know, Pete's a proud member of the United States Marine Corps. And so I'm just asking him, if you remember, it's his drill instructor's name, from nineteen...
Back in, I don't even know, eighty?
A while ago.
Or do you know what we know about it?
A little while ago.
Eighty, eighty-one.
Eighty, eighty-one, yeah.
I was going to say eighty-three.
Okay. A proud member of the Marines, so appreciate all your service in that branch and all the service to the city of Napoleon. So you joined in July of two thousand and one, and just recently resigned about a month ago?
Couple weeks ago.
Couple weeks ago?
Three, a couple weeks ago.
Okay, yeah. So over that course of time, thousands of hours of community service. Lot of time you spend, eight hours at your day job, and then come put your uniform on auxiliary and go to a basketball game, a football game, a parade. You always would see Pete. And whenever you saw him, I always felt very comfortable because I knew exactly the kind of officer we're getting, and we're going to get really good stuff. Not only that, but he also did a lot of interpreting, not just for the city of Napoleon and Henry County, but other places in the fall too, right?
I actually went to some of the deputy's and community scene.
Right. Traffic stops, you kind of named it, when interpreting was needed.
Yes.
His phone rang. So now, your lovely wife is here with us?
Right there, Mary Ann.
Mary Ann, thank you very much for all the cold suppers you eat by yourself. Kate said he's going to be here, and then Napoleon called, and he had to go, and, or Defiance called, whoever called, and said, I had to go there. So, thank you very much for all your time that you shared him with us. Thank you very much, that's a lot of time, so.
And he always did all the cooking.
Oh, he did cooking?
Also a little bit of rescue squad, too.
In Holgate, right? Holgate and South Ambulance?
Still do that, yes.
Yeah, still doing that? So, okay. Yeah. Unbelievable. So, thank you very much for all the, all the time, and whatever the Lord has in store for you next, best of luck. So, I, I was kind of reading, you were the, in case of emergency, break glass, call Pete, he'll be here.
Yeah, I did. Everybody called you for...
Everybody called you for everything.
Yeah, because I just happen to know a lot, a lot of things, you know?
Yeah, and you'd show up and be on time.
Yeah, fix our home wars, I got a bucket truck, rethread the flatboards. So everything, so.
It just depends on what hat you're wearing, what job you're doing that day.
Whatever I'm doing, yeah.
Very good, very good. We got a little certificate here for you. So this says, Napoleon Police Department Letter of Commendation, Certificate Award Auxiliary Lieutenant Pete Mendez. This certifies above-named individual has been awarded the Napoleon Police Department Letter of Commendation for twenty-two years of volunteer service in Napoleon Police Department Auxiliary, donating thousands of hours to the citizens of Napoleon, assisting in events, school functions and sporting events, helping officers with translation anytime the need arose, assisted with parades, security, traffic control during countless events during your years of dedicated volunteer service, given the sixth day of November twenty twenty-three. And Chief Mack signed it, so. So we'll do this, we'll do the grip and grin, all right? Take that ten, there we go. That's you, there we go. All right, Chris, you good?
Yep, we're good.
Brittany, you good? All right, there you go.
Can you just move on? Chief White, so...
Yeah.
We wanted to give you the opportunity to do all of this.
Yeah.
Thanks for helping me out.
You missed your face a little bit. Appreciate seeing you and the help you gave me at the high school basketball games with all the sound issues.
Oh, okay, well, whatever.
Jack of all trades.
Thanks to everybody else.
Thank you.
Yep. Do well. All right, thank you.
Congratulations. Anything else you want to say?
No.
No? Okay? That's what I do. Yeah.
Now, all those years I was at the high school and doing the, I trained in crowd control and stuff, he was my go-to guy.
Always there?
Yeah. He was the one I talked to every game.
Yeah.
He was a pretty nice guy, too, pretty polite, respectable.
Right, yeah.
Very much so.
All right, move on to item F, approval of minutes. In the absence of any objections or corrections, the minutes shall stand approved from October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, council, city, council meeting minutes. Hearing none, they stand approved. Item G, citizen communication, if there's anyone left in the audience that would like to address council on anything that is not on the agenda, you can step up to the podium. And if you are on WebEx, then feel free to type in the chat your questions, we will check those periodically. All right, moving on to item H, reports from council committees. H one, Finance and Budget Committee did not meet on October twenty-third, twenty twenty-three due to lack of agenda items. And H two is Safety and Human Resource Committee did not meet on October twenty-third, twenty twenty-three due to lack of agenda items. Item J, introductions of new ordinances and resolutions. We have one today. J one is ordinance number zero five one dash two three. That is ordinance, an ordinance amending chapter nine fifty-five of the codified code of ordinances of the city of Napoleon, Ohio, specifically section nine five five point zero nine, golf privilege fees, section nine five five zero nine J, fees for motorized cart use, and section nine five, or zero five five point zero nine S, golf outing fees. Make a motion.
Okay.
Okay. Andy?
Yes, Council President, this legislation, these fees went before both the Parks and Recreation Board and the Parks and Recreation Committee, and both recommended moving these forward in order to speak better for them. I will allow Tony to speak to them or answer any questions you may have.
So I guess in review, as City Mayor just said, these were adjustments that were recommended by staff to the Parks and Recreation Board, then to the Parks and Recreation Committee of council. Essentially, it's a one-dollar possible increase on green fees and car fee rentals. Membership rates essentially went up ten dollars. It did eliminate some fees that were membership rates or privilege rates as they're part of the ordinance that we typically don't sell, so we just tried to make it more concise. Then additionally, we are recommending the establishment of drive-on or trailer-on private car fees. And those would be just fifty percent of the current rate that we charge for car rentals.
Thank you, Tony. Any questions?
Is that cart rental fee, if somebody stores their cart there?
That's a different fee we've already established in the past.
Okay.
This would be if you trailer on or you drive from a residential area.
Okay.
If you were to store it on-site, you do have a different thing.
Different, different number?
Tony, is that annual cart membership, is that new?
The annual cart membership, we've had rates already in place. If you were to have your own golf cart stored on-site in our testing area, this would be a new rate. We've got numerous carts now that are driving from residences, almost on our trailer and line. So this would be the new rate we charge. So, we currently charge seven dollars for a cart rental for nine holes. So if someone were to drive their cart on, of course, then that rate, that would be a three fifty.
So for someone who doesn't own a cart, can they just buy the annual cart membership, pay the hundred and thirty dollars, and have their cart covered for the year?
Yes.
Okay. That's nice, I like that addition.
Now, when people come in to pay their greens fees, are they going to be asked if they have their own cart? Because I think people, right now, they're used to driving their own cart, they're going to go and pay their greens fees and go out there, and staff wouldn't know that they might be walking. They don't know if they're saying, hey, I need to purchase a cart.
Well, we'll have to work through that, you know, a staff will have to determine whether or not we're aware of the fact that they have. So that'll be something that we'll have to be cognizant, cognizant of.
Okay.
As we, we'll get this fixed.
All right. All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, Marissa, please call the roll.
Bob?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Molly?
All right, that will move on to second read. Okay, item K, second readings of ordinances and resolutions, we have none. L, third readings of ordinances and resolutions, we have none. Item M, good of the city. M one, discussion or action on change order number nine for the wastewater treatment plant. Andy? Chad?
Council President, I have invited Chad to speak to this. Yes, as part of the twenty twenty-one wastewater treatment plant improvements, we've expanded the plant capacity, and there's been numerous modifications to the site. The asphalt that allows access into and out of the site, as well as around the site, has been beaten up pretty badly. This would allow us to repave the asphalt inside the dike. The number we got, we, we compared that to some other numbers, and the number we got was similar in cost. So rather than putting it off to the end of the project, if we incorporate it into the project, we can incorporate it into our loan, which is a loan interest loan through ECA. So that's why we're presenting this here tonight as part of the project, instead of trying to put it as a line item in the budget for next year. With your approval, we would be able to resurface the asphalt inside the plant.
What is the cost for that?
Probably, I don't think...
Ninety-one thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars.
Thank you, Ross.
They'll do the last thing they do then, too, right, Chad?
Yes, and they...
They're not going to put down new, then put heavy stone top, then tear it all up again, right?
We're going, we actually already started repairing the trenches, but this would be a new surface that will go over top of the whole thing, and the contractor agreed to hold their price until spring.
Oh, okay.
So fortunately, even though we have proved it tonight, they, we would do the work in the spring, and the, the price would be on it by the contractor. And I have not seen asphalt going down.
No.
Chad, can you remind me where we are to our ten percent contingency number?
If we approve this, I think we'll be in the neighborhood of six percent.
Okay.
You anticipate more change orders going forward?
Nothing major. We don't, we don't anticipate anything major coming. We have a few small ones still sitting on the books, but nothing of significant size.
Okay. All right, any other questions for Chad? All right, and we would need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, Marissa, please call the roll.
Bob?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan? Yes.
That has been approved. Item M two, discussion or action, directing law director to draft, to draft changes to the current tax code.
I can do that one. Thank you, Council President. So House Bill thirty-three requires the municipalities to update some of their tax ordinances. These are very exciting updates to include changes to the definition section, changes to net profit allocation, and various other things like that. So it is drafted and ready to go. The legislation itself will give you some more detail, it's not very interesting, but it's just some minor updates that we need to, we need to do to our tax ordinances because the state told us to, so. That's where we're at, and it'll be ready for, for the next council meeting, and give it three reads, and be good to go.
So these changes won't change the amount that people are paying in taxes?
No, so it's, there's the, the first one has to do, in the definition section, it's further defining exempt income and giving certain date ranges, age ranges. Net profit allocation, most of these have to do with businesses, so. It's centralized tax collection, so it's state stuff generally, so it's just something that we have to update. Our local ordinances so the state can collect in a, in an easier way, so.
As long as we can make it easier for the state.
That's always the goal, right?
Right.
It's a goal.
If I can get the direction, if I can get a direction to draft that legislation, I'll have it at the next meeting.
Council President, one of, one of probably the biggest changes that would affect us, and it's not, I'd just say big as in a new rule change, is that we currently tax anybody under the age of eighteen or not. And with this rule change, and not every municipality does that, this would, with this change here is that we would not be able to. So like, anyone under the age of eighteen, if they pay city income tax, we would have to give that refund back to them. That's just one example of about six or seven different changes that we have with that. And it's all through House Bill thirty-three?
All right, thank you.
I'll make a motion to have the law director draft legislation.
I'll second.
Okay, Marissa, please call the roll.
Bob?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan? Yes.
All right. Item M three, discussion or action, award of bid for the Third Street sanitary sewer improvements project. Bringing Chad back?
Absolutely.
All right.
I apologize because normally I sit up front like a freaking screen. I can't see them come back there. Yeah, we received one bid for the project from Vernon Nagel Incorporated. Their bid was five hundred and forty-one thousand, sixty-two dollars and forty-one cents. The engineer's estimate was seven hundred thousand. So the bid came in much below the engineer's estimate. We just request that council award the project to Vernon Nagel so they can get started. There is a three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar grant attached to this project, so this would also allow us to utilize that portion of the grant, which the grant is forty-five percent of the cost of the work completed, so.
Chad, does this go all the way out to Riverview?
All right. No, this will go from Meekson Street to essentially the Lutheran home. What goes from Meekson Street to Maumee was abandoned when we put Meekson, when we put the sewer in on Meekson.
All right.
That old brick arch.
Did that, that went under the grocery store?
Yep, that got abandoned as part of the Meekson Street project.
Were there any other companies that bid?
We received one other bid that we did not consider a valid bid. However, they were not lower. This was a very good number to receive.
Chad, usually when you're, when the numbers are that much different, we got to do some, another step, right? Some kind of checking?
We do if we have another bid.
Okay.
Technically did not have another bid.
Okay.
If the engineer's estimate's over a hundred thousand dollars, and the low bidder is more than ten percent below the average of all higher bids, we contact their surety, do an interview. I did talk to Nagels, Vernon Nagel.
Okay.
They are, they're low on work for the pipe crew, hence their, their, their low bid.
Good work.
However, I did not contact their surety because by our own bid documents, that wasn't the issue.
Nope, that's fine. I just wasn't sure if they had another step or not.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And that's something that we already planned and budgeted for?
Yes, it was in the twenty twenty-three budget. It was our issue two project for this year, we just delayed it because we weren't done with Meekson yet. Meekson is now finished, and I don't, I didn't want to have two construction companies working in the same neighborhood at the same time, if I can avoid it.
Right.
And at completion of this project, we will repave Third Street.
Okay. That's included in?
It is included in this project.
Awesome. Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Chad?
I'll make a motion to approve the bid.
Second.
Okay, Marissa, please call the roll.
Bob?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Molly?
Okay, that's been approved. Item M four, discussion or action, approval of plans and specifications for the Oakwood Avenue reconstruction project. Andy?
Yes, once again, I will defer to the city engineer.
Yes, so for the last several years, we've been working on the design for the Oakwood Avenue project. We've completed the plans. This is an LPA project, which means the project is controlled by the ODOT that runs through the city. This one's different than the roundabout. This one, we actually had the plans prepared, and we will have to do the inspection for the project. The engineer's estimate's four million, nine hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars. We have a two hundred thousand dollar grant for the project that we've already done, or I'm sorry, two million dollar grant.
Thank you.
That's already been awarded. That grant money can be used towards either the street portion of the project or the drainage portion of the project. The engineer's estimate, the street portion is essentially half the two million dollar number. We have applied for other funding sources, we have not heard back yet. However, we do have it covered in, in the twenty-three budget. That's why we're trying to get it out this year so we can award it before the first of the year, because it's in the twenty-three budget, not the twenty-four. So with your approval, we'll get this out to advertise and get ready for next year.
Let's roll. How long do you think this project will take?
The completion date we put on it for November of next year, it's going to take six to nine months. I don't foresee a contractor doing the work with just a single crew. I see it being multiple crews. I, we will probably end up having to do one lane at a time. For the majority of the project, from essentially Overhouse Creek to Freedom Drive, we are replacing the curb and a four-foot section of the pavement, and then resurface... we are replacing the curb and a four-foot section of the pavement, and then resurfacing the rest. So like, what I foresee us doing is replacing the curb on one side so we can keep a lane of traffic open. We will, we'll work with the contractor to determine whether we have one directional traffic 24 hours a day, or if we have temporary signals that would allow back and forth. We'll have to coordinate that with the low bidder. But we could have that going on at the same time as the section that will be closed because we will do a full reconstruction from the railroad track to Overhouse Creek because all the utilities in that section are required to be replaced, the sanitary, the storm, and the water. And then from the tracks to downtown, we're just doing the water line primarily, extending some storm sewer a little bit, but then just resurfacing that. We're not taking the curbs out. It's not near as intensive south of the tracks. We've not been able to get anything coordinated with railroad at this time. We're still trying, we're still hopeful, and if they would be open to replacing their crossing while we have the street closed, we would work around them. But at this time, I've not been able to get the railroad to get on board with that.
All right. A lot of good information. Thank you for our progress. Any other questions?
Just one question, someone had mentioned to me. Is there any sidewalk issues connected to this project somewhere?
Where we do some replacements of utilities, we'll repair those sidewalks, and then also from around essentially Fred Girkens to the railroad, there's so much work in there, most of those walks will be replaced. As you move to the north, the sidewalk's in fairly good condition. If we end up with a few locations where it's in bad shape, we can look at replacing those, but for the most part, the sidewalk will remain, that's out there.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I'll make a motion to take this job out to bid.
Second.
Okay, Marissa, please call the roll.
Bob?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Chad.
M5, discussion or action, consideration of city manager's appointments to combine General Health District Board of Directors for five-year terms.
Yes, Council President, we were contacted last week by Joey Army, the Health Department, alerting us to one vacancy for, and to that vacancy, I would like to appoint, this is one of the few appointments that the city manager has, typically it's a mayoral appointment. But I would like to appoint Joel Steyer to the board to fill that vacancy. And I would also ask that Joel Miller be reappointed for a five-year term. And I would ask for council approval.
All right. Need somebody to make a motion on that?
Motion to approve those.
Second.
Okay, Marissa, please call the roll.
Bob?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Okay, that's been approved. Item M6, discussion or action, new AMP Northern Power Pool Agreement.
Yes, Council President, a couple of weeks ago, I had a call with AMP. Actually, all the members of the Northern Power Pool had a call. This legislation will allow me to sign an upgraded, updated, updated agreement with AMP Northern Power Pool. The Northern Power Pool is made up of 41 municipalities, all within the First Energy footprint. So it's all of us in the northern part of the state. What this pool does is allows us to take advantage of economies of scale for power purchases. The last time this agreement was updated, it was 2011. And they require that the legislative body approve the new agreement. So we would be bringing that forward. No change in the pricing structure. What this does, it realigns, realigns some of the costs within the agreement. And it, the change was basically prompted by PJM and the issues that occurred with Winter Storm Elliot. So because of that, they realigned some of the costs to make it more fair when there are credits and penalties to be had down the road. So I'll bring forth a little bit more of the legislation that's forward, but right now, I just ask that you ask the law director to draft the legislation.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to have the law director draft the legislation.
Second.
Third.
Okay, Marissa, please call the roll.
Bob?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yep.
Ken?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
All right. Go around the table here and start with Kevin today.
The only thing I just want to add is I appreciate everyone's efforts, not just council's time for Friday and Saturday, but all the staff members that made their presentations. I thought they all did a great job. And our next step is at the next council meeting, and Billy, correct me if I'm wrong, we, last council meetings, it was to enact legislation, the law director was. So next, in two weeks, you guys will be passing eight to 10 first reads that'll include with the budget for 2024. So look forward to that. Joe, make sure you show up so you can read all of those.
If I don't show up, Ross will have to?
Somebody will have to, yes. That's all I have.
Thank you. Dr. Dave?
Nothing for me.
Hey, Ken?
It appears that all the repaving that was done this year looks in good shape. Is that fair?
Yeah, everything has been completed. We have one area where the contractor is going to repair on the cul-de-sac on Maumee Lane. But other than that, everything's completed, and I personally thought it turned out real well.
All right, Ross?
Nothing for me, thank you.
All right. Mr. Mayor?
Ken, you talked about bidding projects, and I drove on the roundabout Friday night. You know, the sign on the road still said closed with barrels removed, so we took the chance and went around it. I don't know what time it was, but there already was, I think, an 18-wheeler tire, you know, trailer mark in the middle of it. But I know they're out there today kind of finishing up, and, but that's, I think that's going to be a really nice addition for a long time. And I know they were a week longer than they expected, but let's make sure we get it right and give those an extra week. So it's a little disappointing, but at the same time, it's an ODOT project, and we got it done. It's nice to go around there. I'll echo what somebody said about the budgetary process. I think it's just a testament to the department heads, along with Andy and Kevin, to have a budget that was that smooth. Number 11 for me, and that was absolutely the smoothest. Just, everything was just right in order, right, right down the line. So just really appreciate everybody's hard work that goes into that to make those day and a half go really, 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 really well. Part of the budgetary process, Jeff Wees talked about the sludge lagoons are now completely covered with dirt, and it's just, just bare ground right now. And then Napoleon Rotary Club is looking for a place to add a pollination patch, to have some flowers for some bees. And I'm sitting here thinking, well, that'd be a good place for that. I think the Rotary Club's on board. Can we have that go to Parks, the Parks and Rec Committee? Talk about that, have somebody from Napoleon Rotary come and show it it could be, and take a look and see if they want to do that? Is that possible to do?
Absolutely.
So I don't care if we do it, sooner probably the better.
I think I got the nod from Tony.
Okay, okay. It's, I think it'd be really neat to go from a sludge lagoon to a place that has all kinds of wildflowers on it. I think that'd be kind of a neat. And the Rotary Club then also can talk about, they have potential plans for that shelter house right there that has the Rotary logo on it, too, so they can share both those things at that, at that committee meeting. So if you let me know when that is, I'll make sure that the right people hear from the Napoleon Rotary Club. I will ask for an executive session for compensation of personnel. Last is Billy, thank you for your service, Fishman Day. Thank you very much.
Ken, thank you very much. Thank you for your service.
And you also.
Thank you.
Assistant Chief Leg, thank you for your service. Appreciate it. Did I miss anybody? Okay. The best way to say thank you to a veteran on Saturday is go in and voting, make sure your vote counts by tomorrow. That would be the best way to do it. You wear that sticker on this as I voted. I think it's the best way to say thank you to a veteran is, is taking advantage of one of the things that a lot of people spend a lot of time on walls and on places that we don't talk about, to make sure we can still do that. So that is the best way to do that. And that's everything that I had for the night. Thank you very much.
May, just clarify that, what, you wanted to go to the Parks and Rec? You want that to go to the board or the Parks or Committee, or we can ask Tony which one?
Whichever one you guys want to take it to. How you guys want to do it? Think about it.
Do you want to talk about it first?
Yeah.
Let's talk about it.
Yep.
And then we'll bring it back.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Dan?
Nothing.
Okay, Molly?
Nothing, thank you.
Hey, Bob? Billy?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Andy?
Just again, in terms of budget meetings, I want to thank the staff for their due diligence. I know they work with us very closely and brought forth budgets that were powerful. And it was, I thought, relatively easy as well. So I really appreciate the staff. Marissa, thank you for all your organizing. I appreciated the hospitality tables. They worked well, and I really do appreciate the work you did for us.
Absolutely.
Two days, a day and a half. Tracy was a big help handling the technological side of things, which we like her having here. And finally, Brittany and Brittany Schwab and Tom Weaver. If they are successfully elected tomorrow, they will take two seats on this council, and I appreciated them showing up and being part of it, and an active part of it. That really says a lot for your commitment to the position, so I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Other than that, that's all I had.
Okay, thank you. And I don't have anything different than what's already been said, so we'll move on to executive session. So I need a motion to go into executive session for compensation of personnel.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, Marissa, please call the roll.
Bob?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Question for compensation of personnel?
Second.
All right, no action taken on that. And Marissa, please call the roll.
Bob?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Ken?